Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November 16th meeting of the Murphus River Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order and determine that we do have a quorum present, barely today, but we do. So our first item of business will be to approve minutes of the November 2nd, 2022 Planning Commission meetings. Everyone had a chance to review those ahead of time. Any corrections or changes to those?
If there are no corrections, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then we also have the consent agenda, which we also reviewed ahead of time. Did anybody want any of those items removed for any further discussion? And if not, we'll take it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the GDO section of our agenda. The first item today is Puckett Creek Station Lot 10. Final plat for one lot and right-of-way on 4.3 acres. It's on Commercial Highway and GDO 1. It's located along Manson Crossing Drive and Cedar Grace Drive. Puckett Creek Station LLP is the developer. And Ms. Aguilera, how are you today?
I'm doing good. Chair Jones, glad to be here and see a good, healthy crowd out so that we can, like I can express my talents today. This is a final plat review for Puckett Creek Station Lot 10. The purpose of this plat was to create a, is to create a one-lot of record, dedicate right-of-way, and that's Manson Crossing Drive, as you can see there on the plat on the screen, and record easements. Planning Commission may recall that the master plan was submitted back in the summer and was approved for the creation of the lots and new infrastructure was approved back in June of 15th of 2022. And that was for Lot 9, and again, that was just to account for the creation of the future lots of this area. In staff's review of Lot 10 in the Puckett Creek subdivision, staff reviewed the final plat and found no outstanding items. Staff recommends approval of this plat, subject to all staff comments. I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions regarding this final plat?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B is North Church LLC, Lot 10. Easement plat for one lot on 3.3 acres, zoned MU and GDO 1. Located along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. Medical Center Parkway LLC is the developer. Again, Ms. Aguilera, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jones. This is an easement plat review for the North Church lot along Medical Center Parkway. The purpose of this easement plat is to show the rerouted variable drainage easement. Well, you can kind of see here in this area, there was a correction with that. It had gone through the mandatory referral process, of which the Planning Commission reviewed and approved in the same time of June 15th, 2022 meeting. And portions of that, again, are shown on here to reflect that. Staff has reviewed the easement plat and has provided some minor comments to the easement plat for the civil engineer to correct, but overall found no outstanding comments. Staff recommends approval of this easement plat, subject to all staff comments. Now I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're getting four votes on that every time. Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilera. All right. Our next item is Clary Park Lots 5 and 6, The Shops at Clary. It's final design and site plan review of an 11,200-square-foot multi-tenant retail building located on two acres, zoned CH and GDO 1. Located along Medical Center Parkway and Robbie Corleau Lane. GBT Realty Corporation is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mrs. Jones and Planning Commission. Our third item under the gateway portion of our agenda tonight is for, or this afternoon is for you to consider, final design review for project and site plan approval. The project is Clary Park Lots 5 and 6, currently on the master plan. These two lots are two separate lots of record. However, they will be combined into one lot of record to eliminate the lot line going between them. So then, this will be known as Clary Park Lot 5 in the future. We also refer to this project as Shops at Clary. The Planning Commission considered initial design review for this project and provided preliminary comments for that project, and they're coming back for you today for final approval. This site does have frontage along Medical Center Parkway, as well as Robbie Corleau Lane, which is the new street being constructed by the developer, Heinz, between this property and the adjacent properties. It has two fronts, because there are two front lot lines and two sides. This project is also sharing access points with the adjacent parcels to reduce the number of driveways and consistent with our approved master plan. The proposed use is for a mixed-use or a commercial center, or a strip center, as they're sometimes called. Two of the tenants are proposed to be restaurants, one a furniture store, and the third space is identified as general retail. Because the percentage of restaurant exceeds 35%, we don't count this as a commercial center, essentially asking them to park each use individually. So the site plan does show that they are accommodating seating for two restaurants, a retail store and a furniture store. Staff has shared with the applicants that the furniture store has a lesser parking ratio than general retail. And so, in the future, if the furniture store moves out and another tenant wants to come in, we'll need to look at that mix of the tenant, and Planning Department will ensure that there's enough parking to support the use based on the plan that's been submitted to us. As we've shared with you in the past, Robbie Corleau Lane is a public street that's designed a little bit differently. On the north side, there is a linear park, and then on the south side, it's a traditional streetscape. This project is installing the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan amendment, or elements along Medical Center Parkway, which are serpentine sidewalks, decorative pedestrian scale streetlights, street trees, irrigation with re-purified water to the back of the curb for both sides. In the Clary Park master plan, the street lights are to be 100 feet apart, and that's what's being shown on the plan. The last time you reviewed this project, you did review the architecture for the development? I'll just go over it quickly, since you've already reviewed it. You can see that the proposed building is single-story, approximately 27 feet tall, and incorporates three colors of brick, a vintage black velour, Atlanta black velour, and white velour. The building is designed to appear to have two fronts, since there are two front lot lines, although one will be the functional front. The glazing on the front is clear, and they have designed the site with a drive-through along the end restaurant tenant. We worked with the design team to ensure that there was the bypass lane that's needed and the minimum number of queuing spaces properly designed, and they've been able to address that. Would you like me to pass the board around, or do you recall it?
I'm okay now.
Thank you.
It was also an opportunity to create the void spaces required in the design guidelines, with 35% void space on the fronts and back. Because this is a strip center, you really, they really want to design the back of the building as like a back-of-house, but that's not allowable under design guidelines and the gateway standards, because the area that you might consider the back is actually fronting along a front property line and actually is oriented to the residential, the apartments, the townhomes, the existing apartments. So we expect that there will be a significant pedestrian draw from the north, which is where you might consider the back of a house, to the site. So we've asked them to design that elevation to appear as a front as well. They have the formal open space, the minimum separations that we require in the gateway and the minimum open space as well. So the site is in relatively good shape. If you do decide to approve it today, we'd ask that you do that, subject to all staff comments. Other than that, do you have any questions about the project from me?
Any questions? I just, you feel good with the pass-through lane for the drive-through side of things?
Sure. They, it took a while to get there, but they've created a landscape-raised median to help manage it. If you're familiar with the Panera Memorial Boulevard, the area, they have a drive-through, and so they expect that this, I'm not, this is not a Panera, but similar to that kind of drive-through, not maybe like a McDonald's or high-volume, but something similar to that. But that McDonald, or that Panera, has a lot of pavement where the drive-through is, and sometimes when people pull in, they don't know which way to go, and they get confused. And so, we really wanted to avoid that situation. So we think the fact that they're incorporating the raised landscape island helps define the bypass lane. One of our concerns was making sure that traffic wasn't driving into each other, which it looked like it was doing before. So after several months of working with Kim Lee Horn to get this plan in a better shape, they have designed it to meet our standards. I think initially, because it's not a traditional drive-through, and they were thinking maybe it'd be mobile order pickup, like Chipotle or something like that, that the design standards would be different. But as a community, we often say, we're looking at a 50-year plan. It may be that that's the way the business is managed today. They may do mobile order only, but in the future, you may have somebody move in who wants to do a traditional speaker box and a drive-through, as you would normally have it. And so, we want to set this property up for success and make sure it meets our minimum standards in both scenarios as they are deciding to operate it now or in the future. Oftentimes, we say, we don't want an operational solution to design problem, we want to make sure that there's a design solution to design problem. So all that to be said, I think today, we're in a good place with the drive-through.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is Notes Live. It's initial design review of a 44,601-square-foot outdoor amphitheater, restaurant, and indoor music venue on 20 acres, zoned MU and GDO 3, located along Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard. Notes Live is the developer. Mr. Bobby, how are you this afternoon?
I'm doing fantastic, Chair Jones. As you stated, the next item on our agenda this afternoon is the Notes Live project. Did want to point out, there is one error in the staff report that I wanted to just clarify. In the third paragraph, we list the maximum height in the MU district as 150 feet. It's actually 75 feet. However, the project is still satisfying that height by having a maximum height of 74 feet on their project. So just wanted to be clear about that as we move forward.
Thank you.
As you mentioned, this is the initial design review for Notes Live. This proposed project is located at the intersection of Medical Center Parkway and Gateway Boulevard, and is zoned mixed-use and GDO 3. The proposed project will be for an outdoor amphitheater, restaurant, and an indoor music venue. The current site is oriented where the amphitheater faces the West Fork of the Stones River. The Boot Barn Hall is more oriented towards Medical Center Parkway, and then the Bourbon Brothers Restaurant is more oriented towards your Gateway Boulevard side of the property. Looking at the formal open space for the site, dare say that this property has more formal open space than any project we've seen previously. The outdoor amphitheater has been formally designed with landscaping and seating. It also has areas for outdoor dining and outdoor patio spaces that have been amenitized as well. See if I can find a picture. Let's go down to some elevations. Kind of in this area here, you see the back-of-house, you've got your Boot Barn Hall that faces Medical Center Parkway, and then your Bourbon Brothers with the entrances and patios that have views over Gateway Boulevard. This project will also include streetscape, both existing and proposed. Majority of the streetscape along Medical Center Parkway is currently installed with street trees, irrigation, and lighting. Gateway Boulevard will be modified and will have street trees and irrigation, and any missing lighting added back to it as a part of this project. You've got three buildings, or three main buildings that are included with this project. You've got the amphitheater building that you can see on your screen now. It seats approximately 4,500 people. I lost myself in my notes. And this is an outdoor music venue. It was designed and inspired by Coors Field, so you can see with the large derrick areas here for your sound systems. And you also have gate towers at your entrances here that also reflect that style of architecture. Your Boot Barn Hall building, as you can see here, this is actually the backside of it. You can see the marquee signage that will face part of Medical Center Parkway. This building was designed to reflect the architecture of an older reused warehouse. So it's a masonry building where the, to appear that the windows have been bricked up for use in aging urban. Very unique building. It's kind of hard to see the details, the double roll lock at the cap, your base, your water table, those types of things from these images. But all of the structures do have your required base body and cap as a part of their architectural Access from the property, you'll have two locations along Medical Center Parkway. You've got one here that will come into the central portion of the development, as well as a second portion here that will actually come down to the side and in from here. There's also a third entrance. These haven't been updated, but the third entrance will come in off of Gateway Boulevard. Landscaping is designed to meet our Gateway Design Overlay standards, as well as our Section 27 standards, providing both street trees, perimeter plantings, plantings within the parking lot areas, base of building plantings, and formal open space plantings. The entire site, including the adjacent right-of-way, will also be irrigated by utilizing our city's reuse water system. Through the discussion of this, we have a few items that we just wanted to open for your thoughts. We looked at traffic. They have provided a traffic impact study prepared by Kim Lee Horn. We have distributed that to staff members, and we received it last week. They are evaluating that traffic impact study, and will be back with more information at final design review, as far as thoughts and any type of improvements that they feel are necessary that are a part of that report. That report was not just for the Notes Live property itself, but it was a more comprehensive study that includes the area from Notes Live all the way down to I-24. They also included a sound study. The three, the sound study and sound strategy actually includes three different points for maintaining, or maintaining adequate levels of sound or maximum levels of sound. That includes physical mitigation, electroacoustic mitigation, and then operational mitigation. The physical mitigation, that comes in with the site design where it's sited to face the West Fork of the Stones River. That would put the sound source about 900 feet from the closest residential neighborhood. It's also about 1,500 feet from St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital. It was directed away from those most sensitive areas purposefully, so it would reduce any potential impact to those areas. The electroacoustic mitigation, they have controlled sound vertically and directed the sound down from the towers we were just looking at a minute ago. If I can get back to good image and control the mouse, come back. From the towers, speakers will be mounted at no higher than 40 feet, and sound will be directed down towards the participants and the customers that are there on the lawn area. So that helps to neutralize that sound and prevent it from spreading further. They're also using what is called delay clusters, and I'm not going to pretend to know what a delay cluster is, but it does allow loudspeakers to be operated at a lower sound power, thus lowering the total sound emitted from them. And the third, third strategy is the operational mitigation of sound. And those, the sound levels from each event will be monitored throughout the process and throughout the performance by the front-of-house, the front-of-house area, and at least two other points in the listening area. If the sound levels exceed the prescribed levels, the event producer team will notify, the event production team is notified to reduce the level of the volume immediately to bring it back within those prescribed levels. So moving forward, the third item we had is parking. This is a large facility with three different functions, so they are going to be providing parking for this as well. Total required parking, we're looking at about 1,395 spaces, and the current plan is to provide over 900, it's like 941 spaces at the site, and then utilize shared parking within the adjacent area for the remainder of their parking requirement. Staff has considered that and are in agreement with it, as they're projected to only require that full parking level approximately 10 times in a year. And that would be an efficient use of space, instead of having a large number of parking spaces that would sit empty for the majority of the time they're open. Looking at architectural design, the architecture of Boot Barn Hall and Bourbon Brothers are both themed, as we discussed earlier, represent Coors Field. And then, the Boot Barn Hall and Bourbon Brothers are both styled to be consistent on the campus. They do have the required base body and cap, and they have a mix of materials that includes brick, cast stone, nichihua, and split-faced block. Also includes a small amount of ephes and metal in trim areas and areas above ground As you can see in the elevations, you know, they're mostly masonry. We do have calculations that we can, that are also in your packet to look at the different elevations and see total percentages. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I know Mr. Mudd and the Bourbon Brothers Notes Live team is here, as well as Rob Mulchon from SEC, and we'll be happy to answer anything we can.
Can I just ask, the three different buildings, the Boot Barn and the Bourbon Brothers is the restaurant part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
It's open on a daily basis, I would take it, the restaurant part?
It's my understanding, yes, that those will be open daily.
And then the Boot Barn operates mainly on the weekends, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or something like that?
The Boot Barn, I don't think it will have a necessary limitation under when it can operate. I know they're going to operate for special events, corporate gatherings, trainings, things like that, as well as entertainment. I think our expectation is more the entertainment-type, type of events would be in your afternoon and evening times, and probably more of your corporate training would be more, more in your daytime areas.
Okay. But the parking on-site is sufficient for everything for the restaurant and the Boot Barn?
So parking on-site for Boot Barn and Bourbon Brothers combined would be 780, and they have 941. So yes, it would accommodate those two facilities on-site with additional parking on that.
Other questions?
Well, you said the total parking was 1,300, right?
Total parking at full capacity for all three venues would be 1,395.
So that's all three at the same time?
That's if everything is operating at the same time and complete, at full capacity.
Strange, but okay.
So we're talking about shared or some off-site parking and possibly shuttles or something that would bring people from other parking areas?
Correct.
That aren't used in the evenings, I would take it, and bring people in?
That's correct. Most of the, most of the other properties in that area, well, not most, not all of them, but most of the other properties are occupied during normal business hours. You know, your eight to five, eight to six. This facility is looking at having those more full schedules, evening and to late, you know, late hours. So when the businesses that are there during normal business hours are empty is when they would have their greater demand for parking.
And is part of the staff requirements, I guess, is to have those parking arrangements worked out before everything's finalized?
Yes, ma'am. We would want to see where that, you know, off-site parking is located, a plan for getting, you know, customers from that site to the property. And I believe they already have discussions in process and set to start working on those arrangements.
Are there designated loading and queuing zones for ride-share drop-offs and pickups?
There's currently a ride-share area shown on-site. I think we are discussing maybe the potential for relocating it where it's in an area that's not going to be quite as congested. You can see, oh, let's get to a master plan. See, right in this area. There. Don't see a way to enlarge this, but there is a lane right where my cursor is?
Mm-hmm.
That's where the ride-share is currently designed, where those ride-shares will bring clients in for them to drop off and then exit the property. Same thing at the end of night, where they would come in, pick up their clients, and exit to take them back home. Like I said, we are discussing, looking at, seeing if we can find another location for this that might not be in the same area as customers exiting the parking lot and trying to share the same exit points.
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea. Or if you had to keep it there, at least if there was some sort of designated traffic flow for ride-share only?
Yes, sir.
I think would be necessary.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear.
Oh, absolutely, sir. Thank you for the opportunity and the consideration. On the parking, it's a critical element of any facility like this.
You'll go ahead and just state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Robert Mudd with Notes Live.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. While the requirements are in the neighborhood of 1,300 to 1,350, it's our business objective to have over 1,500 parking spots under contract through shared parking agreements. We are in active discussions and fully expect to be able to do that and have that registered in advance of final approval for your consideration. We do have a desire to pull, let me give you a sense. We have paid Kim Lee Horn, in addition to the traffic study, to do a detailed parking and ingress and egress study for us, in addition to that, which the city does not have in their hands yet, but I anticipate having it with the planners tomorrow. Which leads us to two things. One, we're going to contract 1,500 spaces, but we also are going to make some proposals about getting that ride-share, which we need the equivalent of about 14 to 15 length of parking spots to accommodate the ride-share that would typically be used in a venue like this. But we're looking at bringing it out of the core and potentially to the periphery, which we believe would expedite both traffic and loading and unloading safety for the patrons. In terms of the segmentation of events, we segment our events into three categories. We believe that about six to eight times per year, we'll be at the highest category, which will require these additional parking agreements to come into play. We believe that the large majority of our events will be able to be used by exclusively on-site, on-site parking. The Boot Barn Hall, it will be ticketed about twice a week, once to twice a week, but is also often used for everything from weddings to corporate events, gatherings. In Colorado Springs, we have a church that meets there on Sunday, so it's a very flexible, multi-use facility.
So the reason why I said that was strange on the 1,300 is a 4,500-person venue, and then you have 700 spaces required for Boot Barn and the restaurant. I don't see how 600 spaces is going to be enough for a 4,500 venue if you're full. It's only in the case that you're full when you have all the traffic and utilizing all the spaces that I'm most concerned.
Yeah, I would have to look at the 700, because that number doesn't resonate with what we're seeing. The average Boot Barn Hall attendance, completely sold out, is going to be 488 people seated, and you can expect the density of about 20% ride-share for that.
I get it on that.
Yeah. So, and then the restaurant's full at about two, two people per participant, and on a venue like this, you'll see 25% ride-share for the sunset, and about two and a half uh... two and a half participants per car there. So, that gets us up to that fifteen hundred number. So, I don't anticipate needing seven hundred spots if the sunset is closed.
Okay.
I would anticipate more in the three fifty to four hundred range.
Personally, I was, I'm happy to hear that we, you know, you're going to be able to work something out where there is this shared or agreements with some of the surrounding areas, so that we're not sitting here and requiring thirteen hundred and ninety-something parking spaces that are going to be empty all but six or eight times out of the year. And so, I think this is a great solution to that. I'm sure you all have done it in other places. We'll just say, I had the opportunity to visit the Colorado Springs location, and it's just very impressive. Loved the Boot Barn Hall, you know, that whole concept, and I think it's something we don't have, and be really, really exciting, just the event space and the many different uses that, you know, as you mentioned, I think it covers a lot of bases. So, I thought it was an exciting project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think I speak for all of we're interested in this traffic study too, so that's a big part of this project.
It certainly is, and you know, at the core of who we are is being a hospitality company, and you can't provide great hospitality if people are sitting in traffic for an hour. That's been learned in spades just down the street in Franklin, and we will not replicate that challenge. We won't, we won't, we won't purchase the land if we can't convince ourselves that we can load it and unload it in less than thirty-five, thirty-five minutes.
We all want it to be successful. Otherwise, not worth it. What other questions?
If there are none more, I move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all, and thanks again very much for being here. Moving on to our Platts and Plans, our first item is the Buc-E's Murphysboro. It's a site plan for a seventy-six thousand, two hundred and forty-five square foot convenience market with a gas canopy on thirty-two and a half acres. Zone G1, located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Elam Road. Buc-E's is the developer. Welcome back, Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you Chair Jones and members of the Planning Commission. Today, the first item for our Platts and Plans is the Buc-E's site plan here that's going to be proposed here for Murphysboro. This is a site plan review for the Buc-E's Convenience Market and Gas Station, as you said, located on Joby Jackson and Elam Road. The subject property is zoned general industrial, located on Lot One, and has frontages on three streets, Joby Jackson Parkway, Elam Road, and the proposed John Bales Lane. The plan for Buc-E's will include the main Buc-E's lot and the right-of-way dedication and construction of John's Bales Lane. It is the new proposed community collector. And I wanted to show, this is the main master layout of the site. We'll be looking at this, and we can discuss this a little further too. But the site contains two proposed buildings, the main Convenience Market building and the two gas canopies, with one hundred and twenty fueling stations. Also included on-site are several ancillary elements and equipment that will be helpful and critical to the site. These involve the proposed walking trail, which is located on the northernmost section here. I've highlighted, highlighted it here. We'll be talking about that a little bit. But also included is a bike plaza, a remote generator, and electric vehicle charging stations. So, there's a number of elements to discuss, and for, it's all included in my staff report as well, so if you want to review that further. But because of the size and scope of the plan, I'm not going to cover everything in detail. I'm just going to summarize, briefly summarize the main components of the site, you know, access and parking, landscaping, and building and architecture, just so we can understand what is all going to be involved with this site plan. So, in terms of access and parking, the site will have four points of access. Again, one on Joby Jackson, one on Elam Road, and then two along John Bales, John Bales Lane. For on-site parking, Chart Four of the zoning ordinance requires that they have two hundred and fifty-five parking spaces. In my staff report and as noted on the site plan, you can see the provided parking that they've included for the site. Again, they're required to have two hundred and fifty-five and nine ADA spaces. Because Buc-E's generates a number of traffic, a number of vehicles on-site, and is, again, more of a travel destination, they have parked the site to meet those, to meet that demand, and have exceeded our requirements. As noted by the table, they provided four hundred and sixty-six parking spaces, twenty ADA spaces, fifteen spaces for the RV and bus, twenty-one electric charging vehicle spaces, and twenty-two bike spaces as well for that bike plaza. And so, when looking at the site, I think really, again, we wanted to make sure that it had the access and flow of the site. We reviewed that with the development team, and so these access points will be critical and, again, have adequate space for entry and egress and in and out of the site. Next, what I want to discuss is the landscape. I'm going to go to the next sheet. We have the points here of access. The landscape plan shows various tree species are to be utilized on the site to help enhance and screen certain elements. As shown on the landscape plan, we can see here that where the, where the pedestrian trail is to be, there is a number of trees that are going to be included. Again, right below that as well, down here, is the bike plaza. And so, we can see that a number of species and trees are supposed to be used to help screen that, so that, where staff was really satisfied to see that being utilized all over the site. And then over here, and I can go back and show you as well, right there is where the remote generator is to be. Design guidelines require that type of equipment to be screened, and so they have provided a screening wall as well as some planting material to help screen that further. So, we believe that the landscape plan is, satisfies those requirements. Moving on to discuss the building and architecture, we, as we can, as we reviewed this through staff, the, the design guidelines require the architectural standards for buildings to incorporate very common elements, again, for facade expression, materials, color, and roof design. I'm going to get over to the main building, right here. The main building, which is to be thirty-eight feet, utilizes primarily stone and other cement materials on the primary facades. Right here in the material areas, they have provided the calculations which to show that they are going to be using primarily stone and, again, masonry materials. And for the color, they're using variations of white, tan, and brown around those areas. And again, staff's review of this building, we found it to be sufficient with the minimum standards of the design guidelines. For the gas, for the gas canopies, we've included a little attachment for that as well. That is to be around thirty feet high and has columns wrapped in stone for that elevation for your review. Staff believes that these current designs of the plan meet the minimum standards of the design guidelines, per the material area calculations and the other recommendations of the design guidelines. Overall, staff's review, I'm going to go back to the, the main overall site layout, just in case you have any questions. But overall, staff's, after staff's careful review of the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines, we believe that the plan meets the minimum requirements of it, and that the applicant has demonstrated compliance in terms of, again, parking, landscaping, building and architecture, and lighting, as discussed further in my staff report. Staff recommends approval of the plan, subject to all staff comments, and that for the development team to continue working with staff on any items that may need to be discussed further with the site plan. I am here, if you have any questions in terms of the site, and as well as the development team for Buc-E's is over here to my left, should you have any questions from them.
I just wondered, Mr. Aguilera, on the, looking at the landscape plan they had, and it looks like the entire property is almost lined with, I just wondered what type of planting that is all the way around?
Um...
Is it, you know?
I'll be able to answer that for you.
Yeah, I just couldn't read it in there. I'm sorry.
In their perimeter landscaping, the type of material that is to be used, I think we have here on the sheet, they have a legend, and hopefully, if it's not included in the sheet, no, here, here we go.
And Ms. Frank, the design engineer, may, may...
Yeah.
...address that as well.
Is it a actual tree, or is it a shrub, or is it a flower, or is it a, you know, some ground cover?
Hi, good afternoon. Kelly Frank with Kinley Horn. The landscape team unfortunately is not here with us today, so I'm going to do my best. There should be a legend in here, but it is a mixture, I believe, of trees and shrubs in accordance with the city's standard buffer requirements, so...
Basically going all the way around?
Yeah, to, around the border of the property.
Around the walking trail as well as around?
Correct. I believe there are screening requirements from all rights of way, including to Interstate twenty-four, so we do have that screening along all of those boundaries. And then to screen the stormwater pond as well, the pond in the front of the site that has specific screening requirements that, that we will be meeting, so...
Very good.
Happy to answer any other questions, if y'all have them.
That gets the general idea. I appreciate it. Thank you. Sounds very nice. What other questions? Comments?
It looks like they're overdesigned. I mean, as far as our standards, everything is higher than our standards, so, thank you.
Do you happen to bring any brisket sandwiches with you?
They don't, they don't travel as well.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
We're going to, we're going to make sure that they're very close to you, very...
Any, any other comments or questions, since there's no brisket?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
All second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye. Aye.
Aye with the brisket.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is the PCA Athletic Fields Preliminary Platt for three lots on forty-point-three acres, Zone PND, located north of four thirty-one Dejarnet Lane. Providence Christian Academy is the developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair Jones, question? This particular project is really at two portions. First part is the preliminary plant, that's also going to be tied to their site plan. As you can see in the zoning map above, we not too long ago had approved a change of zoning and planned institutional development in this green area for the predominant PCA fields, which is a four-phase project. And that particular project required Walton Lane to have a T into that particular site. And so, as we reviewed it, we had determined that really they need to have a three-lot subdivision for that particular piece that would break out the existing church that faces onto Dejarnet, the PNC, PCA, excuse me, fields, and then the church property to the north. We received this late last week, and then I received a further follow-up today that shows along Dejarnet Lane, there's a small right-of-way dedication that will be proposed to accommodate a right-hand turn lane, as well as those sidewalks. Those sidewalks want to be in the city right-of-way. And then here, you can see the blow-up on the side. This shows how a fire engine can turn around at this particular point, but you may or may not recall, there'll be a gate on this portion of Walton to fence off the PCA fields for discouraging folks to use that Walton Lane access, and really funneling all of the access off of Dejarnet. The second thing you'll notice on here is we do show this future potential right-of-way connection on the map, but because this is only a preliminary plat map, it won't be until the final that we would show and work with our attorneys to see what kind of potential right-of-the-way that would be, because normally we wouldn't accept right-of-way unless a roadway is built, so it would probably become an easement. But you may recall, Armand is at this location, and when we approved that plan development, we said we needed to retain access to get back out to Armand in the future, even though they do not own the site that's adjacent to the property. But with this revised preliminary plat and those staff comments that are listed in the report, this preliminary plat actually is about thirty-nine point nine eight acres, and the PCA property would be about eighteen point eight. The portion to the north would be about six point oh eight, that's actually RS fifteen, and then the front portion would be fifteen point one acres. So, with the updated map and the staff comments that are in the report, staff recommends approval, subject to all staff comments. And then, of course, later, we would have a final plat that would have to be recorded and come back prior to them getting building permits for their primary development.
Any questions regarding the preliminary plat?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and Item C is the PCA Athletic Fields Phase One Site Plan for Outdoor Recreational Facilities for a private school on eighteen point eight acres, located north of four thirty-one Dejarnet Lane. Providence Christian Academy is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Again, this is the companion site plan that goes with the project, and it is phase one of the development proposal. See if I can get it back on the screen. And so, this particular phase involves a construction of the tennis court facility as well as the baseball field. When we look at the entire master plan for the site, the baseball field is in this location at the corner of the project. This location would be the new tennis courts that they're looking at constructing, and they're looking at constructing this parking area and this parking area, and they have shared parking agreements that would allow the use of the church parking lot towards the front. This particular phase, it will include landscaping around the entire perimeter of the site. As you can see, coming down here, this is the church's property, but it would be going north, coming in, a new roadway that would connect with their existing access point, where you see it in gray, coming up the project site. And then, new landscaping would start at that particular point, and then continue all the way to their first parking lot expansion area, and then along Walton, along city right-of-way, we would not have landscaping, but directly across from that, we do have landscaping as well in place for the parking area and the perimeter. Looking at the site plan, there are six tennis courts that are proposed with the project. A concession stand shown here, adjacent to the baseball fields, which is, tennis courts are actually just adjacent to the ball fields. And then, all of the perimeter, again, will have fencing located around it, tennis courts, we would have your traditional heights and fences, same as a baseball, and then around a good portion of the project site to discourage, again, use after hours. Here you can see, in the future, they still have the location for the field house, but that is anticipated in a future phase, as well as indoor batting cages and storage areas for the fields. In looking at the architecture for the building, they do have same type of materials that they have on their main PCA campus, which is a darker brick and a lighter brick with a stone base. So, this particular elevation here would be what would be facing Walton Lane. The area that would face the fields is this northerly face. The only comment that staff had put down that they may or may not be able to incorporate is, this is a very flat building here, is if they could accommodate a canopy here above the window area, but currently they're concerned that they may or may not be able to see flyballs. And so, that's something that if they could incorporate that as they get into, you know, their construction phase, we would like to see if, if that might be a potential for the property area. But they are having canopies around the other three sides of the building, so you actually have a space... so you actually have a space for people to line up for concessions and be underneath a canopy. And then this building also includes men's and women's restrooms. And then on the second floor is coach's office, and then the, basically, the folks that are the announcers in the top portion of the building. They're also looking at constructing two dugouts. That would be basically three-sided and partially, of course, depressed, using that same architectural features, and then using a dark bronze standing seam metal roof. And then here, you can see those material types of a traditional red brick, and then a slightly brown brick, and then a lighter-colored stone building. In looking at the particulars of the project, staff did have some comments that we've incorporated into the staff report. And, oh, before I forget, so parking, they're actually adding 161 spaces is what's required for this phase of the project. You may recall, future phases will have a lot more parking in Phase 4 when we're talking about the stadium. But because this one has a smaller venue, we're only looking at about spectator seating of about 250. And based on our requirements, it only requires 161. They're building 119. And then the church will have another 347 existing spaces that they'll have access to for about 460 spaces. So they'll have three times more than what they actually need for this particular phase. But they didn't want to build that parking areas closer to the tennis court areas so that they don't necessarily have to use church parking right off the bat for their project. And then lastly... I think that's it. Oh, and of course, tied to this project is they will have to record that final plat with, that we just discussed prior to them pulling building permits. So that way, we're, one, making sure that all the required easements are in place, especially that future tie back to Armand. And then we will also have the right-of-way dedications necessary to make those legal lots of record as well. So with that, the applicant is here to answer, yes, is here to answer any questions that you might have on this project, and it is basically Phase 1 and a portion of Phase 2 of the PCA project.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Starting the site plan.
So with the construction of the baseball fields, one of the bigger issues was lighting.
I was just thinking that when you looked. Yes, so lighting is included in the project. The fields have, I believe, I put down here, it's 50-foot-tall poles. And then I looked at the photometrics. There are a couple of areas that are more than the .5 standard, so they will have to make the adjustments to make sure those photometrics at the property lines are less than .5. So that is one of our comments. And I think if I recall correctly, it's mostly occurring on the north easterly portion of the site. There's about half of a road portion that exceeds that. I think it's like .9, but it's pretty close, so they'll just need to make those adjustments. And part of our requirements is redo those photometrics to make sure they meet the city standards. But we did give them an exception to the pole heights. So they'll have 50-foot at the fields, and then they'll have 20-foot that will come in that new drive aisle area, because there's a sidewalk that will come all the way through there. So we want to make sure any pedestrians that are coming through there are not drive, walking through in the dark.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
If not, then I'll move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have the CarMax parking lot, change of use site plan for an automobile sales use, including 1,000-car inventory parking lot on 9.8 acres located along Epps Mill Road and Miller Lane, and served as an outside-the-city sewer customer with the city zoning equivalent of L1, our industrial LI. Christiana Miller Lane LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Again, you'll notice on the screen above you is the outline of the area. It's one existing parcel used to be known as the Armory. You may be asking yourselves, why are we looking at this piece? They are an outside-the-city sewer customer, so they have an agreement with the city that if any development occurs on the site, it has to get both approvals at the city and meet city standards, as well as going through the county's process. So the applicant is working both with the county and the city on this particular project, and we're sharing that information back and forth with our county counterparts. In this particular project site, what they are looking at doing, you may know that CarMax has an existing site here in Murfreesboro that is really a sales-type use, where you're having customers coming to that site. What they found, kind of post-COVID, is they had a need for inventory locations where they can go ahead and put those vehicles, not have any actual visitors to the site, and then be able to offload larger inventory coming in and generally working with dealerships. When you look at their site plan layout for it, here's your existing Armory, old Armory building that they would be keeping in place and only using maybe about a third of the building, the other portions of the building for storage. There's currently a small shed-type building, garage building in the back that they propose to remove from the site to put more parking kind of closer up to the building. And then they're looking at putting chain-link, black chain-link fence around the entire perimeter of the site. See if I can draw that in. And then they're looking at their access points into this being a new access point that the county and the city required off of New Miller Lane, especially as old Miller Lane may, at some point in time, be abandoned. And their other main access point into the areas through this point of egress. Currently, there's, this point of egress does exist, and there's a second egress point in this area closer up to the intersection. This is right across from the Loves Truck Depot. And so they do have some cattle guard-type gates that they still anticipate that they will use, but they will be removed out of the right-of-way on this particular project. In looking at it, similarly to the other site here in Murfreesboro, we did allow for really pushing all of the landscaping to the perimeter of the site versus where all of the vehicles would be lined up. I'm going to get you to the landscape page. You can see here the circulation for their anticipated drop-off of vehicles on the site. And this is looking at meeting all of our requirement standards for a regular, even though they're not having regular folks here, it will meet all the requirements of our motor vehicle sales on their particular site. And here, again, we are looking at the landscape being pushed to the perimeter of the site versus the center sections where you see the striping, and that's where they're going to be storing their inventory. But what we are looking at is having a Type E buffer with a berm in any of those areas that are visible to the right-of-way. So basically, the entire frontage here is highly visible to Highway 24. That's where we would be looking at having the berm, as well as the other portions of the site that will have a berm and landscaping, whereas the other components will have just regular perimeter landscaping. And then we are looking at additional base of building plantings on the existing buildings, so that will clean up, you know, some of these areas as well. And when they add new striping, we'll have new landscape islands that will, again, beautiful by the site and meet our city standards. I believe the applicant is in the audience. I see Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Aaron Bertrand for the applicant. If you have any questions on this particular project, our engineers have looked at it to make sure that adequate drainage facilities are being provided at the southerly portion of the site to handle all of the water runoff, as well as the quality and the quantity of water that would come off all of these new hard surfaces. And then lastly... There we go. You can see the front of the building and some of those improvements. It's very straightforward as far as not really any huge changes to the existing building.
Ms. Smith, that, on the plan that we're looking at there, the site plan, that the big circular, so all of the vehicles that they're bringing for storage are going to be offloaded and/or unloaded within the site and not out on either New Miller or Old Miller Lane?
Correct. So the drawing that I just pulled up on the screen, this is their path of egress coming through here, so they would come right onto the site, open those gates, come through here, and then circulate back out. And then they also have the opportunity here to be able to come in and through those drive aisles and right back out the backside, depending on what the county has. So we do have a requirement there that they'll need to, of course, meet all of the county requirements. And really, we're deferring to the county on the access at Epps Mill, because they are working with TDOT on some various improvements in and around that particular area. But because it is the county and they're really involved in that, we've deferred that particular item to the county.
If there are none, we'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Russell, could you confirm that was subject to staff comments?
Subject to all staff comments.
Okay. And next, we have the Murph Apartments Site Plan for Various Modifications at an Existing Apartment Complex, Including an Increase in Density from 9.8 to 12 Units per Acre on 22 Acres, Zoned RM12, Located at 1345 Wendland Drive, Eastman Residential Developer. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon again. You'll notice on the screen, we have highlighted in the green shading is the existing complex that was previously known kind of as the Social Murph, was what it's been named recently. But when it was originally built back in about 2003, it was named Raiders Ridge. That particular apartment complex was originally approved with 216 existing units. Many of those units are four-bedroom, four-bath-type facilities. You may recall, we've worked on a couple of projects that have looked at renovations to those existing facilities to take those four-bedroom, four-bath units offline and create one- and two-bedroom units instead. And what that does is that reduces the bedroom count, but it increases the unit count. So this particular one, when they were originally built out, they actually built less than what the RM12 district would allow. They actually built at about nine units to the acre. And so in this particular request, what they are looking at doing is, because they already have existing room to go up to 12 units to the acre, they're looking at only increasing the unit count by 48 with the existing zoning. But that does require a site plan review, as well as we look at it as you're not just touching those units, that you're creating different walls, but you're actually upgrading all of the plumbing fixtures within the entire complex. So this has gone to council for a sewer variance for both what we call Phase 1 and Phase 2. So Phase 1 is just these four buildings on the site, and basically, every corner of those buildings are where two fourplex units are, and that's where they're looking at having those gains. Phase 2 of their project would look at another 48 net new units in these buildings on the site, but that cannot be approved unless they do a zone change to a PRD. So the applicant, in order to start working through the project, they said, we want to kind of be able to get started as soon as possible. They're already doing upgrades to the existing clubhouse facilities and such, since they purchased the units. And, but council did look at both Phase 1 and Phase 2 and approved the variance for sewer to their full, what they would ultimately like to do, which would be 312 units. But at this time, we're looking at just going up to 264 units. The improvements are shown there, and I'll have the applicant in a moment come up to describe some of these Phase 1 improvements that are in addition to, you know, just changing some of those interiors out as well. And when we're looking at it, this particular one shows a little bit more clearly where those buildings are. So the buildings that you see there in orange, which are Buildings 5, 6, 7, and 8, is their Phase 1 that they're looking at making those modifications. You can see here to the top, this is how the existing layout of those buildings look. And the first, second, and third floor are identical as far as the layout. They're stacked on top of one another, and they would be going to this layout with, really, it's just those end units here that are changing out to that different bedroom count. With that, what staff did do is we also took a look at the parking requirements, because we wanted to make sure that any proposals that they were doing in this project, as well as any future projects, would meet the parking requirements. So you'll see here in the right-hand side of this particular one is that they do meet the existing standards, of course. But when they're changing out their new unit count, they would actually be required to have 627 parking spaces, and there are 703 on-site. And at a later time, we just wanted to run the numbers. If they had any future expansions by a change of zoning, that would require 699 parking spots. And again, they're at 703. So we wanted to make sure they're meeting their parking standards. Any new HVAC equipment would have the landscape screening requirements that we would normally put in place. And then here, they are looking at doing some expansions to some of their amenities. And with that, I'd like to ask the developer's representative to come up and describe some of those improvements that they're looking at having on the site.
Thank you, Holly. Clyde Rondrieux, Huddleston Steel Engineering. This is, as Holly mentioned, another bifurcation project. Excited about working with these fellows. They're coming out of New York area. They already have two properties in town, so this is becoming a place where they're doing quite a bit of investment in town, so we're excited about having them. As Holly mentioned, this was entitlement. You know, we're entitled for the extra units, so really, the process has been kind of a hybrid between a planned development and bulk zoning. So the first 48 units are covered under the existing allotment that was previously approved with the zoning. But because it's a hybrid, they've committed to doing several of the amenity upgrades as well, along with Phase 1. So with that in mind, some of the things that we worked through with the staff is restoring the operation of the Pitts Lane Gate. Right now, that gate is non-operable. It's just basically locked. And we felt like it's important to have access on both directions, onto Weldon, as well as onto Pitts Lane. Stripe and seal the parking lots. A lot of these apartments that we've talked about, a lot of them are in kind of not great shape. This apartment complex was actually in pretty good shape when they bought it, and it recently changed hands a few years ago, and the previous owner had put some money into it. So it's in really good shape visually. There's a few repair jobs that need to happen. Repurposing the basketball court into a children's play area. One thing that's happening with these bifurcations is they kind of change their unit mix as far as the people are actually occupying the facilities. And so you end up getting more families. So a lot of the amenities are more catered towards college kids, and now they're going to try to repurpose those to be more family-oriented. And saw a larger playground, expand the dog park, clean up the volleyball area, even repurposing the tennis courts, so they have one tennis court and two pickleball courts, so they're going to be contemporary with the pickleball. Redo the pool deck, improve the landscaping around it, create a little more privacy around the pool deck area. The clubhouse is in nice shape, but they're just going to bring it up to speed in terms of more contemporary-looking. And they're going to add a mailroom, which we're starting to see a lot, too, because of all the package deliveries and how they coordinate that. So it'll have a new mailroom as well in the sales center clubhouse area. so it'll have a new mailroom as well in the sales center clubhouse area. And then obviously, as Holly mentioned, bifurcating the four buildings is a part of the mix. So with that in mind, we're here to answer any questions you have. We're excited about having them in town. They've been great to work with, very responsive, and we will be following this up. This is approved with a rezoning for a PRD in the near future. They just wanted to be able to get them all rolling and start the process. Michael Picklesheimer is the architect, so if there's any questions regarding architecture as well, we can walk through that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any questions?
There are none. I'll move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All we can get here. And we appreciate the investment in these apartments and getting things back on track. Thanks very much. Next, we have new business. We've got to schedule a public hearing. It is a proposed amendment to the sign ordinance pertaining to electronic changeable graphic display signs. The City of Murfreesboro Development Services Division is the applicant. You're not Ms. Stevens?
No, no, I'm not. Teresa has a sore throat, I guess. Conveniently happened about 20 minutes ago. She's been out for a day or two. So, I'm Robert Holtz with the Building and Codes Department. The sign ordinance change we're proposing has to deal with changeable signs, electronic graphic display. They will be allowed on properties zoned MU with a PSO zoning overlay. Recently, the city has received proposed new developments that include these types of signs as a part of their proposed sign package. Additionally, I'd like to tell you that earlier this year, January, February, we retained a sign consultant who is currently rewriting our entire sign ordinance. Our intentions have always been to include these types of signs in more areas. Right now, they're virtually not allowed, so we're looking to expand that. One thing we did do a couple of years ago, we do allow them at drive-throughs, so we're slowly bringing these types of signs into our sign ordinance. And as you already stated, what we're looking for is a public hearing to be set up for December 7th of this year. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holtz. Any questions regarding this proposed change?
Some move.
Motion for a public hearing, December 7th. There we go. Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holtz. Next, we have staff reports. Mr. Blomley, I understand you have something you want to discuss with us?
Yes, ma'am. All of y'all should have gotten an email yesterday regarding a proposed special meeting, a workshop to discuss the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan Update and the Future Land Use Map Update. You recall, we had a public hearing on that item back in March. It was deferred. Planning staff has been working with the development community to address some of their concerns, to fine-tune the map, and we're ready to bring that back to you for discussion. At this meeting, we don't expect there to be a decision. We're not asking for consideration at this meeting, just discussion and to workshop it a little bit. And so, as I mentioned in my email yesterday, the date that we're shooting for is November the 30th at 11:30 a.m., and that would be a lunch meeting. We'd be serving lunch that day, hopefully make it as convenient as possible for y'all. And so, if, I know Mr. Salas and Ms. Jones, y'all have responded. Mr. Russell, Mr. Wright, if y'all need to look at your calendars, if that, or if that works for y'all...
I only have one requirement. Bookies.
Bookies. Ms. Jacob will drive to Crossville before the meeting, and... All right, good. So y'all are both good for that day. Excellent. We appreciate that. We are looking forward to making, continuing to make some headway on this update.
Well, we appreciate it. I think the workshop session helps us all a lot, be able to discuss it and understand it more before we see it.
What were the times again, please?
November the 30th at 11:30 a.m. We expect it to last about an hour and a half, so hopefully it won't last too much longer than lunchtime.
Here, airport?
It'll be at 218. Room 218, we figured that'd be a good intimate setting where we could have some good dialogue on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. And any other staff reports or any other business?
Yeah, it might be good if we could get a motion on that, on that meeting date and time.
Some move. Second.
Motion and many seconds. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And if there is no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.